Clerk Segrist, call the roll.
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek. Let the record reflect Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens is absent. Trustee Snyderman additionally is absent. And finally Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have, we call for a motion to approve one set of minutes from October 8th, 2019, board meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now would be the time in our agenda for any citizens' non-agenda item comments. Is there anybody, Mr. Miller, would you like to approach the podium?
George Miller, I would like to ask you a few questions here. There's an ordinance on dust control and dirt, mud on streets. On some of the areas here, Canton Center Road in Cherry Hill area, Sheldon Road by Michigan Avenue, basically, and by Tractor Supply. I'd like to know why some of that mud's not being cleaned up when they leave the site at night. It goes to DPW, it goes to your law enforcement, it doesn't do anything. It goes to the building department, it doesn't do anything. There's been several complaints, they tell me, in the last two or three weeks on it. What can be done and remedy it? Follow-up, your department to follow-up to see that it's done. Next, on the street sweeping issue with the, with the street sweeper, it's been taken out of service here. We have a letter to that effect, fine. I'd like to know why it was bought years ago when it, the builders are responsible for taking care of their dust and mud and debris at their sites. They're responsible for that. You have an ordinance to that effect. So why was that bought for that? And some other items over there, like you have, I've been here at the meeting, it's been okay for a, like a brush hog to clean the dishes, the weeds out of it, mow them down. Is that still in service, do you know? Why isn't it being used in some places? Also, one other thing, on senior citizens, I'd like to know if there can be any van equipped for a hoist, because there's no, NACAN transit does not go to the veterans over in Ann Arbor Hospital. They don't go to U of M, and they don't go to San Joe's. I'm sure there's quite a few people that could appreciate the transportation to go out there. They have to pay a big fee to go out there, taxi fare, or however they can make it to go out there. Livonia has a place, a van, that goes outside of their area a little bit, a couple, three miles, out of their city limits. I'd like to know why we can't equip a van for that, we have them for picking up kids after school. It costs around $20,000, I understand. And that van can still be used to pick up children, even with the hoist in it. There's no transportation for senior citizens over there to San Joe's, to the veterans, or U of M Hospital. Now, veterans, they do have some, if you're a veteran. But the rest of the people in the community is just tough luck. I want to know what we can do to improve on that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I would ask that, could we have one of the trustees make a motion to approve or make payment of the bills for the month?
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we have a swearing-in of the Youth Advisory Council. Clerk Segrist will lead us through that. Are you going to do everybody at once, or one at a time, Clerk Segrist?
A couple that haven't shown, so I can have them.
We have a few officers who are going to be sworn in with different oaths than our general All right. Treasurer, member, member. Okay, do I have Natalie Richardson and Arushi Ganguly? Please come up and meet me at the flag. I'll swear you in for the families, if you want to get ready. Now would be a good time for photos. And then when we're done, I'll have you come over to the podium, and we're going to have you sign these oaths. I'm going to have you raise your right hand. I will say, when I say state your name, at that point you watch your, state your name. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Natalie.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
This is the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of member for the Youth Advisory Council.
Of member for the Youth Advisory Council.
For the Charter Tournament.
For the Charter Tournament.
Well done. Top one right there, and that's for your records. And then, Arushi, if you want to come over here, you can sign there, those three. All right. And then, do I have Brahm Preet?
Yeah, so we have, the other two, they were locked out in the back door, so everybody's here now.
Okay, everyone's here.
(laugh) Sorry, they came to the back door.
Okay.
So, your leadership team is this, and this, and this. And then you have one more that's, like, I'm just a member.
Okay. That sounds fantastic. All right. Did we sign all of these? Okay. Ladies, I'm going to have you sign all of the sheets that are here. There's like four sheets. Go ahead and sign both. All of the white sheets are here. We, we keep a log. The top one is going to be yours. Okay. Okay, meet me at the podium here. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Ayush Verma?
Aye.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge duties. Of member for the Youth Advisory Council. Of the Charter Tournament. Must be a relative.
Yes.
Rishba?
Rishba.
Rishba. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Rishba Verma.
Aye, Rishba Verma.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Secretary.
Of Secretary.
For the Youth Advisory Council. For the Youth Advisory Council. Of the Charter Tournament. Of the Charter Tournament. First. Hassan? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Hassan Za.
Aye, Hassan Za.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Vice President.
Of Vice President.
For the Youth Advisory Council.
For the Youth Advisory Council.
Of the Charter Tournament.
Of the Charter Tournament.
Congratulations. All right. Baba?
Yes, sir. Is that okay? Yes.
Your last name is?
Yes.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Baba Karam.
Aye, Baba Karam.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
President.
Of President.
For the Youth Advisory Council.
For the Youth Advisory Council.
Of the Charter Tournament.
Of the Charter Tournament.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Amprit Sinhini. Solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Michigan. That I will faithfully discharge the duties. Treasurer of the Youth Advisory Council. Of the Charter Tournament.
Give Clerk Segrist a moment to clean up the paperwork. Clerk Segrist, would it be appropriate to have those resolutions read into the formal minutes?
I make a motion that we read those oaths into the formal, into the record.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Congratulations, well done, guys. You're more than welcome to stay. It's going to be a pretty boring meeting tonight. Okay, you're more, you know, it's okay to sneak out. All right. We'll see you guys around, take care. Be good.
Bye. Thank you, good job. Good luck.
Consent calendar in as a single item?
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as presented with item C1, approval of amendments and exhibits to sanitary sewer service agreement by and among the City of Plymouth, Plymouth Township, Canton Township, Western Townships Utility Authority, and the County of Wayne, and approval of termination agreement between Watuah, each of its member communities, and Wayne County. Item C2, reappointment of three planning commission members, looks like Chandru Archaya, Archarya, Nancy Egenberger, and Greg Green. And then, item C3, consider authorization of permit for private fireworks display at the BAPS Temple.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G1, general calendar item. Consider approval of the schedule, to schedule show cause hearings for two properties subject to dangerous buildings hearing orders.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the date of November 26th, 2019, at 5:30 PM, for the purposes of conducting show cause hearings for two properties that failed to comply with the deadlines imposed by the Dangerous Buildings Hearings Officer in 2019.
Support.
In summary, there are two properties that have failed to meet the requirements and deadlines established by the hearing officer following recently-held dangerous building hearings, as prescribed by township ordinance and state law. In light of the failure to comply, the board must take action to set a public hearing at which the property owner must be given the opportunity to show cause why the hearing officer should not be enforced, or the hearing officer's order should not be enforced. The hearing must occur at least 30 days after the meeting, at which the board sets the hearing, and the notice of the date and the time chosen shall be sent to the property owner. Following the hearing, at which both the property owner and township staff will be given the opportunity to speak, the board will decide if the determination of the hearing officer should be carried out as ordered. And the two properties in, under discussion are 500 Marion, which is a house that was burnt down spring of 2018, and then 870 Lots, which is a dangerous building, hearing that goes back to June 4th, 2019, and was to be completed by September 30th, 2019. Director Smith did a drive-by on the 500 Marion this afternoon, and it was confirmed that they were disconnecting the utilities, so that one appears to be moving forward. But to ensure that it does move forward, we're going to go ahead and follow through with these, these hearings. And then if they do demolish the property, bring it up to speed, then we'll just remove it from the agenda when it happens. Are there any board questions for Director Smith? Go ahead, Dan Murray.
Thank you. These, I really appreciate that we're moving forward with this. I know a lot of residents have called because of these properties. So in terms of, I'm seeing that we have the hearing, and then they're given 30 days, and then how soon after does a house get demolished? What is the timing?
After the hearing, after the 30 days, after you have the hearing after 30 days, they have 21 days to comply after that.
Then we go ahead and we, what is it, about 30,000 to 40,000, I think, on some of the houses?
Probably, it depends on the structure, but that would be a rough estimate. And then we would go ahead and demolish the properties, and then it would go on their tax bill.
Simple residence that I remember was as low as 12,000, but if you've got a pool involved and basement, it gets more complicated.
The Comcast was saying they had seen some rats, and that, you know, obviously houses like this attract rodents, and you have the mold, and of course, it's a dangerous. And it looks like there was a hearing in August, and so...
That was with the hearing officer. Yep. And so it was deemed at that time that they were to demolish the buildings. They have not complied with that. That's why we're moving to the next step, which is to set the hearing with the board.
Did anyone show for that hearing? Did any of the owners show for the August?
Oh, yes.
Or they did?
Yes. Mm-hmm. I would, I would, I'm pretty sure that we'll at least get one of the owners to show up at the hearing in November.
They were given how many days in August?
Well, August until now that we're bringing it before you, so I'd have to go back and look and see what the ordinance states. I want to say 60 days.
It was done by August, or worse, September 30th? Okay. All right, thank you. No, I'm good.
No further questions or comments. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item G2, consider award of contract to Fishbeck Thompson Carr and Huber for professional engineering services for the 2019 road improvement program, and extension of the contract for the 2020 road improvement program.
This is in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a change order to the existing purchase order contract for the 2019 major road construction projects to Fishbeck Thompson Carr and Huber Incorporated in the amount of $32,750.
Support.
In terms of background, in 2018, the board approved the ballot language for 1.45 mil, so road funding millage, which was approved August 2018. Canton committed to begin construction on road repairs in 2019 construction season, has completely, or successfully completed all the proposed work that is scheduled for the past year. During the course of the construction in 2019, the scope of work was expanded for several concrete road repair projects that were constructed by Great Lakes. On August 27th, 2019, the township board approved a change order to the contract with Great Lakes that included increases in quantities and expansion of the repairs on the following roads, Canton Center, Salts, Hanford, Lilly, and Lots. Due to the expansion of the contracted construction work, Fishbeck has requested contract modification to increase the construction engineering inspection services. The increase in the construction engineering services corresponds directly with percentage increases in the construction of work by Great Lakes. For example, the length of Lots Road construction project was extended by 25 percent, therefore Fishbeck Construction Engineering Costs increases by a corresponding 25 percent. The details of each project are provided in the attached amendment. Request, the letter from Fishbeck was in the, in the package as attachment one. Director Smith can answer any questions the board may have. Go ahead, Dan Murray.
Now, Lilly Road was extended, I know a lot of residents are asking why we didn't go any further. What was the extension from Lilly Road? It says to the point of Addison. So how many feet was that? Do you know?
How many feet was the extension on Lilly?
Yeah, well, how did they determine that they needed to extend at that time?
It had to do with the mobilization of the company that was here doing the work. They were actually able to go further, and there was more dollars that were, that were allocated and that were awarded. We had that in the road fund, so they, they went ahead and moved further through the project. They, and they saw a greater need. So once they got out there and they looked at the conditions of the road, there was a need to go further.
I know, also, we're getting, I'm getting a lot of questions from people asking me, how do we know that they did a good job? And so we know that they're surveying, and do they give those reports to you? Are you reported on when, like, Lilly Road was finished?
Our engineers are on-site almost every day. So they say they do a good job, we say they do a good job, and actually, we're recommending them to come back and do the road projects for next year as well.
Those are good answers, we can give them at the doors, thanks.
No further questions or comments. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve Fishbeck Thompson Carr and Huber as the consulting engineer for the 2020 and 2021 major road projects.
Second.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item G3, request to purchase spare critical telephone system equipment.
Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order totaling $28,460 payable to CDW Government for the purchase of spare Cisco hardware components and engineering services from CDW Government. Funds for this purchase exist in the IT Services account number listed for capital outlay computers and equipment.
Support.
In brief, the, there's a request here to purchase spare parts. In, on June 2019, we were without the phone service for nine hours while we waited for key replacement parts, which were delivered, reintegrated into the system. While 9/11 was not affected, public safety does maintain 10 other phone lines, which are critical to public safety. Having the spare equipment on hand and the documented processes will allow IT Services to restore phone services in a much shorter period of time in the event of future hardware failures. The details are in the packet, but we also have Director Trumbull here, if you have any questions. Go ahead, Michael.
What time did the blackout occur? It was a nine-hour window. Was it during business hours, or was it in the evening, or over the weekend?
It was at the end of the business day, middle, early to mid-afternoon, and it went on until about 10 o'clock at night. We do have a warranty with Cisco where they'll deliver the parts within, I think it's a three-hour maximum window that we would get it. But the problem is, once we get the parts to integrate it into the system, if it fails, it needs to have certain encryption and whatnot on the parts to actually be incorporated into our system before it can even get utilized. So with this equipment that would come in, we'd get the spare parts, it would be set up and programmed, so if we had to swap out equipment, it would be a much quicker swap, and you don't have to get the right licensing on the new software, because all the server equipment has to have the security measures and the licensing to allow our phones systems to actually work. So this gets us there much quicker, we can get the processes nailed down. I know we had some less-than-ideal workarounds for the non-emergency lines, but it's important that we get those working. There's items, and Director Meyer can speak to it a little bit more fluently than I could, but there's certain items that come through the non-emergency lines. If we do a press release saying that they're not answering, you know, we can't get the phone calls, that's okay, but if there's alarms going off, the, the non-emergency phone lines is what alarm companies use to reach our police officers for them to respond, and if, if we're getting alarm calls, you know, for four or five hours without being able to respond to it, that's a problem. So we did have a workaround, it's not an ideal one, but this will allow us to have that spare equipment on hand, and we'll get the procedures documented. So hopefully, if there is, hopefully, we don't have another problem, but if we do, hopefully, it will be a very limited time period that we would be without the non-emergency phone lines.
No further questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Consider authorization for supervisor assigned contract for masonry maintenance and repair to approve a purchase order for Summit on the Park masonry repairs.
Supervisor, I move to award a contract and approve a purchase order to Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings LLC at 1-878-6-SUSANA in Livonia, Michigan, 48152, for masonry maintenance and repair services, for a three-year agreement with an option for three-year renewals. The purchase order will be submitted in the amount of $44,000 from the account number listed for capital outlay, capital outlay buildings and improvements for the repairs made at the Summit on the Park.
Support.
September 5th, 2019, proposals were received for masonry, maintenance, and repair service. A full summary of scope of work is provided in the contract attachment A. Of the two proposers, Carpentry Concepts and Ceiling LLC was selected to provide the services. We are requesting to enter into a three-year agreement with the option for three-year renewals. Costs will be determined on a project-by-project basis, based on the fee schedule and the provided agreement, which is under attachment B. In addition, staff has worked with Carpentry Concepts and Ceilings LLC to develop a scope of work for the Summit on the Park repairs, based on design specifications from the architect under the costs that have been already identified in the, in the board item. Are there any questions for Director Holenberger? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item G5, consider approval of purchase order for building interior signage installation.
Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order for building interior signage in the amount of $40,735. The amount of $26,582 will be paid from the account number listed for capital outlay and building improvements, and the remaining $14,153 will be paid from the account number listed out of, for CDBG funds.
Second.
Due to the many changes in where staffing is located within the township, the directional signage has become outdated and inaccurate in some cases. In addition, the guiding of our guest properly, it's also important to meet the current standards for the ADA regulations. An architect was hired to design upgrades to the administration interior signage based on the design drawings. Leisure services staff has negotiated with Spectrum Signs and Designs based on their board-approved contract from May 14th, 2019, which was item G4 for the, then, for the development installation of the new signage. Total cost for the signs is $40,735, and will be split between the two accounts as budgeted and shown here in the budgeted accounts. Are there any board questions for Director Holenberger? He has lead on this one, facilities. Yes. Any questions for Director Holenberger? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item G6, consider approval of purchase order for Cherry Hill pathway construction at I-275 to Lots Road.
Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase order in the amount not to exceed $50,000 for the materials needed to complete the Cherry Hill path connecting to the I-275 Metro Trail. Budgeted funds will be used in the amount of $50,000 from the account number listed for capital outlay land improvements.
Second.
During the construction, it was determined that a substantial part of the trail has significant soft areas making it unable to support the trail as desired. To strengthen this area, geotechnical fabric and extra stone have been added before paving can be completed. That is what's being presented here. Do we have any questions for Director Holenberger? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item G7, consider authorization of supervisor assigned contract for Summit banquet feasibility study.
The form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize the township supervisor to sign a contract for Green Play LLC at 1021 East South Boulder Road, Suite N, in Louisville, Colorado, 80027, in the amount of $24,999.
Second.
Before I read what's presented here, we had a tour this evening of Partnership for the Arts facility, and one of the things that they had suggested there is, Director Holenberger and his team is very much aware of it, but also, when they're looking at the Summit facility and potentials there, there may be some things happening there as well. as well that this outfit's going to help us come in and give us different ideas. So in summary, in August, Leisure Services issued a RFQ, RFP, to obtain proposals for qualified firms, conduct the prepare feasibility study to determine if Summit on the Park is maximizing all of the areas of the building, with an emphasis on the banquet area. Recommendations will focus on the future use to meet the growing needs of the community. Three separate proposals were received for the Summit Banquet Center feasibility study. A team consisting of Leisure Services and finance staff interviewed each company, and as a result, is recommending Green Play LLC to provide three services, these services. Green Play offers extensive experience with over 525 projects of similar nature completed to date as part of their proposal. Green Play LLC will subcontract with Barker, Rinker, and Seacat Architecture to assist with the evaluations, analysis, conceptual costs for the alternative uses. BRS was consulted on the original design of the Summit on the Park, so they're not a stranger to the facility either. Director Hohlenberger is here to answer any questions the board members may have. Anne Marie?
Director Hohlenberger, why, I noticed you're saying that basically we're losing revenue. Why do you think that is? Because there's more banquet facilities in the area?
When the summit was initially built, we were basically the only game in town as far as banquet operations go, so there's been an increase in competition there, and our revenue has been impacted that way, so we're looking at what's the best future operation for that portion of the building. They'll look at the whole building, but specifically focus on the banquets to look at. Should we continue as banquet operation? Should we modify that to make that the most, the best use for the community? Part of it, too, is the banquet facility was constructed 24 years ago and hasn't had any major cosmetic updates, so it's kind of, at the time, it was a very modern-looking facility, and now it's fairly dated as well.
Cost, I hear that a lot, that it's real expensive to hold weddings there.
That could be a portion of it, and that's something that this will look into as well, and we're looking at, in a short term, some other options with that contract potentially as well, that would open it up to other food service providers doing the bookings through us and then having a preferred caterer list, so we're exploring those possibilities as well.
What about, I know that the Leisure Services, you have shortage of rooms for some of the classes, and you're, are you looking at using any of those areas to exercise or add classes?
Potentially. Right now, a lot of the exercise-type classes wouldn't work in there because it's a carpeted surface, and something like a Zumba class, for example, needs like a hardwood floor-type surface, so that's something that we would look at when we're doing the feasibility study. They'll look at the spaces and potential revenue in our customer base, and really, they're going to be doing surveys of the public, staff, as well as, I believe, some of the board members, to try and figure out what are the needs, so that we can look at what's not only going to meet the needs of the community in terms of what are their demands, but also what's the best revenue possibility there as well, so that'll kind of give us some different options.
Remember, as part of your five-year plan, there was some, some of the people had talked about having some culturally sensitive rooms to exercise, like women-only. What's nice about those rooms is you can close off so that people can go in there and not feel embarrassed by, you know, if they're embarrassed by whatever they are embarrassed or just culturally sensitive, so that's another...
Yep. Yeah, there's a lot of options available to us with that space, so that's what this will help us determine.
But it'll use the five-year plan also when they're looking at it, right?
Absolutely.
Additionally, there is a potential for a very large banquet facility coming to Michigan Avenue. There's people that are taking a look at that, so if that does come to fruition, then that basically negate what we've got. The other thing, from a historical perspective, there was a belief that golf outings would use the summit facility for banquets after the event, and it turned out that golfers have no interest in blocking that couple hundred yards, so that's...
Once they got in their cars to leave Pheasant Run, they would just carry on down the road and not go in for dinner, so that was the strategic idea in the beginning, but in practicality, it did not work.
Banquet facilities, other than the golf courses, is that where they are?
You've got Burton Manor, you've got Laurel Manor, you've got Livonia, yeah, Livonia. Ypsilanti's got some good-sized facilities, Ann Arbor, obviously.
I can't tell you where all of them are, but that's part of what they'll do, is they'll look...
Employee meth, there's the, yep.
Yeah, they'll do a strategic survey of where all of our competition is as well, so that we'll get a lot of data out of this that'll help us make a smart decision as far as recommending the future direction for that portion of the building.
Will factor in the operational costs for administering the banquet facility, determine if the existing model makes the most sense.
Right, right. Yeah, they're not going to look at just potential revenue, they'll look at expenses and what's the best bottom line for us as well.
Time frame?
Three months, so we should, by the time we get this started, early next year.
Court will come back to the board?
Yep. Yeah, well, probably, my guess is, once it's completed, we'll do a study session with the board to kind of do a deep dive into it.
No further questions. Those in favor of the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Second motion.
Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount of $24,999 to Green Play LLC at 1021 East South Boulder Road, Suite N, Louisville, Colorado, 80027, from the account number listed for professional contractual services.
Can I get a second? Thank you. Those in favor of the second motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item G8, consider approving repairs to the 2014 Pierce ladder truck and associated 2019 fire budget amendment.
Mr. Supervisor, this is in the form of two motions. I move to approve repairs to the 2014 Pierce ladder truck's turntable aerial rotation device by halt fire.
June 14, 2019, during morning vehicle inspections, it was discovered that the Pierce ladder truck, that the gated Y connection to the hose had become tangled under the ladder turntable and hose bed, causing the damage. The department conducted an internal investigation, determined, and did determine that there was no negligence on the part of the employee, and further, there would have been no way of knowing about or preventing this from happening. In the future, preventative measures will be taken to minimize the possibility of this occurring again. In the meantime, Director Meyer is available, or Chris Stockline, to answer any questions we might have. Are there any questions? Need to fix the fire truck? See no questions? Those in favor of the first motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to approve the below-listed 2019 fire budget amendment, an increase in revenue to the fire fund balance appropriations account listed for $50,000, and then an increased appropriation for the maintenance and repair of machinery and equipment account for $50,000 as well.
Court?
Those who favor the second motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, G9. Mike, you've got all the, you've got to carry all the load on this one. You've got the model and the background, and I'll do the summary for you, and then you can go deeper if you need to.
All right. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the Clerk's Department Office project for the installation, reworking of electrical outlets and data ports as presented, the rearranging of furniture as presented, as well as the purchase of other office furniture and accessories not to exceed $13,000, utilizing existing funds within the Clerk's budget.
Court?
Summary, Clerk's Office seeks approval to rearrange its office to better accommodate changes in law, technology, and staffing. Over the last 15 years, it has been noted the Clerk's Department has not been utilizing its space to maximize efficiency and productivity. With over 100% increase in permanent AV list participation, Department expects a significant increase in the quantity of ballots processed, stored, and delivered. The Clerk's Department seeks to utilize existing budgeted funds to produce an environment that supports changing demands and facilitates the ability for teamwork. Changes will also provide the Clerk for employees with better space to perform their task and the deputy clerk with an office. Other minor accessory improvements are being planned as well, and we have Clerk Segras to answer any additional questions the board may have.
So if you look at the first diagram in your board packet, that would be attachment number one, will show you the layout of the Clerk's office. This is an after photo, so you'll have to visualize the way it looked prior. We would be formatting, the conference room will become the deputy clerk's office, the deputy treasurer has an office. I had put money into the 2019 budget to construct an office. We decided to use that on election-related expenses, as opposed to constructing a new office and repurpose the conference room into an office for the deputy clerk, at which point, we would take the conference table and create a work, a communal workstation in the general office area. We would be moving two cubicles to accommodate that, bringing on two satellite workstations for having clerical employees who would be participating in overtime for the processing of the increase in absentee ballots, so we'd have two extra satellite locations for scanning absentee ballots, a communal work area for processing the absentee ballots, and then we would be moving the stations to accommodate that for space.
So where you have all those six chairs around, that would be an area where you would count absentee ballots, huh?
Not counting. That would be, I might go into the mundane details of running an election, but we would be processing the ballots, basically. They would be coming in, we would be comparing the signatures to the signature on the application to ensure that the same voter who requested a ballot is the voter who voted the ballot. We would then be sorting them by precinct, and then doing that for probably 30, the 20,000 to 30,000 absentee ballots we'll be getting. Once we've balanced the precincts, we'll be moving them downstairs to a secure location and storing them down there by precinct, and we have 40 of those precincts, so...
What would be in this one room with a lot of space here? You were saying that you're making it into an office in the room, right?
Oh, no, that's the tabulation room. That's a secure room where we keep what we call our EMS software. That is the software. There was a wireless router there that, or a trans, what's it called? There's a listener there, so when all 40 of our precincts close on Election Day, ideally right around 8:05, 8:10, which never happens, but they will be transmitting their results to that listener, so all 40 precincts' results will be hitting that listener instantaneously. It will be aggregating all of those results. That gives you your in-precinct results, right? We will typically, on election night, have, so that's an existing space, nothing is changing there. IT is there, creating a report that will get uploaded to the website. Everyone gets excited because the first round of results come in, but those are only the precinct results, because typically, the absentee counting board is still down in the basement, processing all of those ballots, so while the information is useful, it's still not typically enough to know who won or lost a race while we're busy processing the absentee ballots. Those informations will come up via a flash drive, they will get put into that computer right there, and then they will co-mingle both of those results, so you'll have your precinct or Election Day results, you'll have your absentee results for a grand total, but that's that equipment right there. That room is staying the same.
Any additional board comments? Questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That completes the formal agenda for this evening. Is there any additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, call for a motion to adjourn, or wait, stop, staff. I'm sorry. Directors, do we have anything to add this evening?
Just, I do. Just a reminder, end of next week, starting November 4, we actually go to five-day pickup for trash. Everybody can go to the website and see their new pickup day, type in their address, and see if their day is exactly, is changing.
Transition period with, wait a minute, I didn't know, and...
Yes. Communication will be going out to all departments for proper information to hand out when the phone calls come in. The information is out there now.
In addition to what we've tried to communicate, anything else additional the media could do? We would appreciate that. Thank you.
That's it.
Good. Any additional board comments?
If I may, just briefly, Treasurer Slavens is not in attendance because her husband, Mark's father, Thomas Slavens, passed away recently on October 21 at his home in Ann Arbor. He is an alum of the University of Michigan, also worked in library sciences, was a great man, so just wanted to let her know that we're thinking about her and her family right now, and that's that.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, those call for motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The Court?
Motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.